We'll call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, a land, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'd like to take a brief moment of silence in remembrance of Mark Novak, former mayor. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we will start out with a visit from Smith.
Yes, Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation is here, so. You said you have some handouts. I can help with that.
Oh, thank you very much.
They were in a hot car.
They were. So, I'm Andy Arnold. I just noticed your name, Arnold, with a T at the end. No T on it, but Andy Arnold from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And I just wanted to, we had visited Alyssa, had visited back in 2018, and we just wanted to stop by, make sure we thank you for your support of the Southern Minnesota Foundation, and encourage you to continue to look at our programs and be part of that. And I wanted to just give you a quick overview of kind of what we do and keep a conversation going. So, thanks for having me, and thanks again for what you guys do. Just a quick background, Smith continues to serve our 20-county region, and we ensure, with the idea that we ensure strong and vibrant communities. We do this through three main proven areas of focus: assisting entrepreneurs, supporting early childhood efforts, and community engagement. And annually, we put about $5 to $6 million back into this region within the three areas. And I know, I'll kind of skip ahead, I know you guys have worked with Wasika, We Need Foundation, also have a Janesville Foundation, but there are still opportunities for you to take advantage of some of the programs that we offer. So, with entrepreneurship, if you know anybody that's trying to start a business, is working on, maybe struggling with some business things, we offer opportunities both from a lending standpoint, where first and foremost, we are a gap lender, so to remember that, and we strive to work in partnerships with other financial institutions. And even if we're just a small piece of the lending package, we can provide one-on-one technical support. We also have some opportunities for rural, it's a rev program, Rural Entrepreneurial Ventures, where we come in and can help grow entrepreneurs with people who have ideas. And there'll also be some upcoming incentives and specific programs for people who are wanting to, let's see, BIPOC-led groups. So, if there's people that are wanting to do that, we can definitely help move that forward. Another thing that I wanted to kind of stress is the early childhood. A lot of communities struggle with finding childcare, and that is an area of focus that we try to help support in the region. One thing, if you are not doing this, I wanted to plug the trainings that we have. So, if you know of people who are in childcare and need continuing education credits, we offer free trainings, and we have one actually coming up September 23rd, or some fall trainings over in Mankato, which is fairly close to here. And there's several different areas of focus that people can take part in, in this region in Wasika. That's been something where we've had a few participants, I think we had 13 providers participate at this last year, but we would love to encourage more people to take advantage of that. And we also have opportunities for, we have a coach who can come in and meet with people one-on-one to give them curriculum, also advice, strategies, and how to just help with their own business plan and support that. One of the other grant-making programs that we do is we provide free books to young people in the area. In Wasika, we did, I believe, just over 600 books, and in Janesville, we gave 80 books to the JWP Kids Corner, so that was nice, but we're always wanting to do that. And kind of going into the last part that I just wanted to focus on, my role at Smith is I'm the community foundation coordinator, so I work with community foundations one-on-one with things. And I know you guys have your own thing here going, but that doesn't mean that you can't apply for some of our programs. I wanted to specifically highlight the Paint the Town grant that we offer. It'll be this next spring, so if you're thinking of projects, we can give up to 100 gallons of paint or $5,500, whichever one you go. So, if there's a project or people that want to do something, whether it's a historic project, or just updating some businesses that are wanting to do a mural, that's something, apply for it, and we can help you with that. Or the Small Town Grant, where we give grants to communities under the size of 10,000 people, and just approach the guidelines, that'll also be the spring of next year to look for that. But if there's an idea or something that you're wanting to do, up to $10,000 for a project in the area, and we can help support that. So, the packets that I gave you, it kind of gives a little overview of the Wasika County area and what we've given here. I believe it's about $4.8 million that we've invested in the community, and just want to again, thank you for your partnership, and let us remind you that we are here. If you have any questions, to contact us, and would strongly encourage you to take advantage of the programs and grant opportunities that we have. So, if you have any questions for me, let me know.
There's a lot of information in a short period of time.
I know, I tried to do the quick thing, but please know if there is anything anybody wants to meet with, I represent affiliate funds and community foundations, but early childhood and the people who are entrepreneurs, we can bring people in to help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Set agenda?
Yes, attached are the minutes from August 14th, council meeting, and then we have the receivables and the payables. The payables are pretty routine this time. I just was going to point out that there is a couple expenses for the new fire trucks, the equipment that were ordered. You'll see those in tonight's payables. Andrea, can you come up with anything else?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public forum. Anyone here which speaks to your public forum? Come on up to the podium. Tell us who you are and where you live.
That's all you can say, just who you are and where you live, then you have to.
My name is Lori Middlestud, and I live at 112 West Health Street. And I just wanted to kind of bring up an issue that we're having in Janesville. We are having a huge problem with feral cats. And I had come down, and I'm not sure who the lady was on the other side of the glass, but I'd asked a question on whether or not there were any city ordinances and stuff for people who do the feeding and the watering and all of that of these cats. Because it has gotten to the point where they're doing interbreeding, and there's some medical issues that are going to start developing. And I have gotten together with, her name is Mary, and she runs a nonprofit organization, and it's called Four Pets, and we are teaming up with benches, Minnesota Humane Society, and SNAP of Minnesota, trying to figure out how to get these cats spayed and neutered. And we actually ran an ad, actually, the Janesville Journal ran an ad for us last week and this week, trying to get donations from the public to help pay for the spay and neuters. There is a guy from town that is willing to do a lot of the live trapping for free. I will be doing some of the live trapping too, and basically what we want to do is get them trapped, get them spayed and neutered, and depending on their age and whether or not they can be integrated into like an adoption, that's what we would like to do, and we were just wondering if we would be able to get any help from the city.
We do have some animal control money in our budgets. We don't actually use it very often. Possibly we should be. Well, the last couple of budgets I've looked at, we're way under what we budgeted for, aren't we?
I'd have to look, yeah.
And I guess the, that's the hardest part though, is I know that years ago, we had one of our neighbors who, it was absolutely appalling how many cats he was feeding. And that some of us neighbors got upset because they were using the kids' litter box, or sandboxes as litter boxes. They were going into gardens and doing all that stuff. And I don't know what happened, but he had somebody come to the house, have a conversation with them, and he was told that he was going to be responsible for all of those cats, and he actually relinquished them all. And I was wondering if that was something that we could do, or something could be put for a, I don't know, just to have something on the books at the city that if you keep doing this, you're going to be the one that is responsible for taking care of these animals.
Okay. I definitely hear what you're saying. The way public forum works is basically you're.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I don't know.
No, you're fine, but to actually get action from the council or something, you would have to be on the agenda. Which is very simple to do, if you like to, you can agenda request for.
Or if we just, as we discussed the budget.
Yes, we can, now that you've brought it to our attention, we can work in ourselves as well.
Yeah, that's probably.
But as far as giving you a direct answer tonight on what we can do, we really can't do that.
I didn't think so anyway, but yeah.
But now, you definitely put it on our radar.
Okay.
So, we will, as we're looking at budget stuff right now, from now to the end of the year anyways, so it's.
That would be very much appreciated, because we're going to try to get as many done in the month of September and October as we can, whatever appointments are allowed for the vets to be able to do the spay and neuter.
Do you have any idea how much it could cost to?
Yeah, she does the numbers and everything, so.
I'm Mary Lisa, and I work with Four Pets, the nonprofit out of Mankato. We help Southern Minnesota. I get calls every day about little towns especially with cat problems. So, what I did was I wrote a grant to the Minnesota Humane Society to help the city of Janesville. And I didn't quite realize how many cats there are. I've been working with a couple people in Janesville that have cat problems, because they can put up to three litters a female per season. But it got out of control again, they didn't call me, and then you called me, and so it started happening again. And I'm willing to volunteer. What I do is form a group, and somebody to set traps, watch the traps, because you can't just leave a trap alone. And then we have transportation to Mankato, where I have two clinics they can go into, get spayed and neutered, I'll keep them overnight, and then have somebody transport them. So, that's how we'd work, but right now, I think Minnesota Humane Society is going to pay up to $50 per cat. We pay 25. The range for price, because they get two vaccinations, rabies in December, and the spay or neuter, usually it can run anywhere between $80 to $150 per cat. So, average life of a cat that's TNR'd is seven years out in the open. Otherwise, they just keep breeding and interbreeding and disease, and it's quite sad to watch them, especially when the kittens are all sick and dying. So, anyway, I'm willing to help the city of Janesville.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the plan for these animals once you have them spayed or neutered?
That was my, going to be my question, do you like tag an ear or nip an ear?
It's called TNR Trap Neuter Release, so basically, a right ear will be a male, a left ear will be a female. If there's no place for them to go, farms are filled, and if you take them to a farm, most likely they won't succeed anyway. They just run, and then they don't have a food source. But people are feeding them here in town, or you wouldn't have a problem.
Right.
So, and I don't blame them, it's hard to watch an animal die of starvation, so it's a vicious cycle. Any other questions? I don't know how the city feels, so you guys can talk about that, about TNR, Trap Neuter Release.
So, your plan is to release them back from Janesville?
There's no place for them.
No, I understand.
I get calls, I had eight calls today of, "I've got kittens, I've got kittens, I've got cats under my trailer, I've got cats under my deck," so, not just Janesville, it's everywhere. But spay and neuter seems to be the answer for right now, until we license people to have a path and be responsible, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Probably something we need to keep on our radar, I guess.
Sure.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Is there anything?
I'll have to look.
I'd like you to check on, see if there's any regulations, any ordinances against feeding feral cats and dogs.
Yep.
I took a look through the pet section, and there appeared to be nothing.
That's what I thought too. I couldn't recall any. Be worth visiting when we do our ordinances.
Anyone else here to speak to your public forum? Public forum? Moving on. News and Communications?
We have a letter from a former resident of Janesville, it's in your packet tonight. I would like to respond or reply to this, so what would you like me to, what would you like me to do?
Did we discuss this originally when it was painted?
You called me.
I don't know that we discussed it on the record, I know there's been some discussion about it.
Was the, was the library board involved with this, or was this someone outside of the purview of the library?
I believe so. Let's, should we say what the letter's about?
Oh, yeah.
So, the crowd is still confused?
Yeah. You want to just read the letter? Or the three points?
The letter is. The steps of the library last summer were painted, and the individual is pointing out that it's on the National Historic Register, isn't even allowed to be painted. She asked three questions, did the city council approve this? The answer is no. Does this alteration jeopardize the library's status on the register? I don't know. Would the city council consider restoring the library to the original state, the steps? And I think that's kind of the big question she's asking.
I think, we had this discussion before, I think maybe we should just get the paint off the steps.
What was it?
Get the paint off the steps.
I agree, it's a pageant queen from years ago, built to the standards of the '30s and '40s by Carnegie. And we put a cheap dress on a beauty queen. So, I think that it's, it looked poor. I think the colors are bad, I think the whole thing is done about poorly.
I know it was done with good intention.
I agree, I agree, however, it is done improperly.
I am going to say one thing, there was no permission given.
No, I.
From anyone. So, I think, I would like to see it, put back the original state.
I think this is a good place for us to address, are we going to continue with that library building as part of the city, or are we moving toward our community center more?
I will address that myself. Personally, I think the library has a future in this community. It may not always be the center point of our library system, however, the significance and the historical importance of that building and that being a library in the city. I do believe there are resources or portions of the library that that can be used for. If there's a new library made or put somewhere else, so be it, but I still think that this would be, and if it isn't used as a library, I believe we can use it as a museum place, a display of artifacts, something within the city. I would be hard-pressed to vote not to use that for city purposes. That's just my opinion.
From my point of view, Jim, I would disagree with you 100%. The reason for finding alternative facility for the library is because of the long-term maintenance, the handicap accessibility, the mold issues, the window issues. They continue to require funds to maintain that building, far beyond what we can get out of its use. And that's where I sit.
So, what are you saying, because it can't be taken down?
Sure it can.
Yeah.
Can it, because it's.
If it would be sold to a private individual, it can be repurposed.
I don't think it can be sold. I believe that, if I remember, I looked up, I, this is two years ago, I believe, I looked on up, what are the ramifications if you alter a historical building that's on the register? And there are none, other than being removed from the register, or if you have used federal funds to do something with it, the federal funds have to be given back. But I do not think there are any ramifications other than removal from the register. And I'm not positive, but it seems to me that's what I read a couple of years ago already. So, we can do anything we want with it, it simply would be remove from the register. I believe that's a ramifications. But we could look it up, or have somebody research it, and then we'd know.
Well, at this exact moment, it is our library, and it's our only one, so.
Right.
Focusing on the letter, I guess I think we should probably look at the removal of paint. I thought that from the day it was done, but we kind of go by the wayside.
Very good, I will reply.
You will reply to the letter?
Yep.
Would you like me to reach out to possible paint removal crew?
I talked to her today. She'll be down next Monday, so.
Joe, do you have any ideas? Should we just let Andy roll with it?
Well, I mean, we can maybe just ask the people that did it, why they did it, if they want to undo it.
I have seen it done on another library, I've seen pictures of it done. It was a completely different type of structure, and I guess I would say it was done with a little more flair than what this project ended up with.
I'd send it down too. I just don't think it's appropriate for the old lady to be dressed in a rag.
It probably shouldn't have been done on the city property without permission anyways.
Correct.
So, you're going to ask them, or whoever?
He's going to reply to the letter, and we'll reach out to the people, see if we can not step on too many toes, I guess. Council reports.
September 13th, we have a golf course advisory board meeting scheduled. So, we'll be going over how everything's going out there this year, plans for next year, and just an overall look at the season, because it'll be starting to ramp up at that time, but still a lot of golf left to be played.
That's September 14th?
13. Wednesday.
I took the.
There's a meeting in this room that night, we'll have to meet somewhere else.
5:30?
At 6:00, there's a meeting here. That's okay though, we can.
Okay.
We'll find a spot. Sorry, Ivan, go ahead.
No, you're fine. I took the liberty of going over to Wasika last weekend, talking to the county administrator, just introducing myself and asking some questions on how the city of Janesville and the county relate, and my focus was, do they have a grant writer, and how can our EDA Board work with their EDA? And we talked, talked a little bit about that, and I got some more questions than answers, I guess, but it was good. One thing you did inform me is there is $250,000 available in Wasika County for tourism, and nobody has applied for it. So, if the city or an individual in the community could come up with that, they would have a pretty good chance of receiving it. Another thing is, the county owns a piece of property across Highway 14, is about 10 acres. They would like to see that developed within the next year, but they have no set plans, it's not connected to the utilities from the city of Janesville, it's kind of out there in the open. So, as far as a grant writer, the county doesn't have their own grant writer, they have worked occasionally with, the city of Wasika has a grant writer, her name is Tina Wilson. I've talked to Tina, and she's knowledgeable on grant writing, but she's committed where she's at, unless the two cities would come to an agreement to share her, it probably wouldn't happen. So, just something I thought I needed to go and dig around a little bit and see what we could find.
I'm not opposed to the idea of sharing one on a percentage basis, I would work to the budget, but it could be beneficial.
That, and the county administrator also mentioned that before COVID, city council and the county board used to meet together once a year. He would like to see that reinstated, unpossibly yet this year.
Good idea.
Anybody that can help with that? Okay. No, that's a good idea, we do meet with the school board once a year or two. Anything else for council, Jimmy?
Well, the park board met prior to our meeting, and quite a lot of things. We went over the budget possibilities, and we are submitting a request for a little bit different numbers than, not a lot, but a little different numbers. The park equipment for over here has been ordered, Joel thought it'd be in in October or November, and hopefully we can either get it in this fall or early next spring. We set agendas or our priorities for next year, for projects we want to accomplish or are thinking of it, and then we've got a few long-term projects we're looking at. Also, we'd like the input on the five-year plan that we'd be doing next summer. Clinton brought up that it's being adapted or adjusted this next year for the next five years, and the park board has some ideas of submission to that. What else did we have? Removal of the basketball court and rim out here, if the council is not opposed to that, we'd like to remove that. Any other thoughts or ideas that we need to submit?
You did great, you did great.
Anyway, there's a lot of things going. Anyway, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts, very active groups, so. I thank them for their service and for their input.
Nursing home's doing good. I see after our meeting the other day, Pete sent a letter that they had a surprise inspection and did fairly well, so.
Good.
Well, one other thing, Joel had a suggestion for the deer park out there, so I think that's on our agenda for later or not?
Oh, we got Joe coming up for a couple of things. We'll get something out of him.
Can't wait.
Administrator report.
Yes, attached in this administrator report is the cash balance from last Friday. I would like to hold a personnel committee meeting. That's Andy, Andy and myself, so if we could try to come up with a date, Michael, I'll let you know what we come up with on that. Andy shared with us the golf advisory board. Uh, capital improvement plan, staff met with Jason Femright last week and we are beginning to update our five-year plan, which talks about, it's different than what Jim was just talking about. This is our street and utility projects, our overlays, steel coating, crack filling, and we've also added the alleys in the central business district. So you should probably have that fairly soon. And the long-term plan, Jim just mentioned that. I don't really have to say anything because everything I wrote, you already covered. Sarah talked about the nursing home inspection. Oh, I'm going to be gone next week. I'm going to be on a little vacation, so I'll be back after Liberty. That's all I have. Any questions?
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have Joe here tonight for department heads. I don't know, the way the agenda's written, we're going to have to get you up, sit you down and bring you back, but.
Come back later?
Yeah, you can tip your department head.
I don't have much for department head, uh, reports, um, as I alluded to a little bit with the deer, um, out at the park. We're getting some new regulations coming down from the state for our deer. Um, basically the state doesn't want any more farm deer. That's what they call it, farm deer. Um, so they're going to require us by September of next year to have double fencing. So no outside deer can make contact with a pet deer. Um, so that make, excuse me, gives us a decision to make of, do we keep the deer? Do we keep some of the deer? Do we do double fencing on, you know, the small pen and keep some? Uh, what do we do with the other pens? Do we get goats? Do we remove the fence? Do we utilize that within the park? Um, some other way? Um, so that's all some decisions that we have to make. And then, like I said, that's September of 2024, we have to have double fencing in place to be compliant. And so. Any recommendations from council on?
Did you have an idea?
I do, um.
Let's hear it.
I think a lot of people drive out there just to see the deer.
People love the deer.
I think they're a big thing for this community. Um, my recommendation would be double fencing the north pen, so as you drive through the park, uh, the pen on the north is the smallest pen.
The original pen?
Yep, kind of gets the most visibility anyway.
Yep.
And we would do that double fencing price, I'm not exactly sure on yet, but that's something that we work on this winter. Um, brackets and some posts, you know, get things in place, so we're compliant for inspection for next year. That would be my recommendation. And of course, we, we thin the herd a little bit. Um, so then we just have a few deer in that north pen, just so people can still come out and enjoy it.
Thoughts for the other area then, or?
That's up for a discussion, you know, you could do, you could do goats.
Well, I'd probably do goats for a while to clean it up before you took the fence down.
Yep, they're a lot less regulated. We still have to get a program of veterinary care from Troy, um, just to have something on the books for the USDA inspection side of it. Um, but for the deer, the Minnesota Board of Animal Health has always been our inspector as well. They're turning that over to the DNR. So we'll be dealing with the DNR for inspections, so, just kind of a different, different wrinkle they're putting in there on us, so. But ultimately, I think we should keep some deer out there. Um, it's just not as many. So.
Both fences have to be equal height?
They have a whole list. They have like four or five options. Um, distance from the existing fence, height, um, size of the square is the fence. I mean, it's just, it's a whole list of things, so.
That's all CME?
Related, yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep. So.
Okay.
I guess anything else? Uh, Jim discussed a lot of things we were doing in the parks, um. The only other kind of real big improvement that I was happy to see get done this year is we updated some storm sewer problems we've been having, um, kind of down by the trailer park area of town down on Elm Street. We put in, uh, we had Tom Bornicki construction put in a 12-inch storm, storm line. That was basically the only other area in town that consistently flooded out, um, well over the roadway. So that has alleviated that problem, so glad to see that done. Questions?
Should we just keep them up there?
We can do that. You want us to jump ahead? Back and forth?
Do the budget?
We'll do the budget and then we'll jump back to the safe route since you're up here.
Okay, you have two sheets in tonight's, uh, council packet. We're going to look at the street department draft, their budget, and then also the park department budget, which is the second sheet. Uh, generally speaking, there's a 4% increase in the street draft budget. Looking to buy a stump grinder with the street and the park department sharing the costs. Do that next year. Um, we updated the mosquito spray contract, the price, a little bit. Because that cost did go up.
What else, Joe?
Yeah, just to kind of touch on that stump grinder purchase, um, kind of the theory thought I had behind that, um, you can look up, uh, a few lines for the tree removal line item. We also recommended to increase that a little bit with the Admiral Ash Bore that's kind of floating around the area. Um, you know, obviously we're going to have to end up taking down more trees and try to save some costs. We get a stump grinder for our skid loader and try to utilize that and try to save some costs that way. Because we're going to end up having to kind of keep, uh, keep going on tree removal as needed. That was the only other, obviously the road maintenance, $200,000 in the CIP plan. I always plug that, that that's just huge. One other thing that's not on here yet, I know Clint and I have talked a little bit about, um, onboarding another full-time public works worker. It is my hope, my recommendation, that that may happen this next budget cycle. Um, hopefully right around June would be my, my hope. Um, and the budgetary impact of that, um, I'm not exactly sure yet, but we split, the way our salaries and insurances are split up is 50% streets, 40% sanitary sewer and 10% parks. So each three departments would end up taking, um, a chunk of that cost, um, but approximate numbers, I'm not exactly sure yet, so.
And if that were to take place, then it would impact the 2024 budgets by six months, half a year.
Right.
That would bring you up to three full-time employees?
Yep. You know, we ran a skeleton crew, not to try and justify it, but we ran a skeleton crew for quite some time and Nate Zimmerman's absence has, has kind of showed some, some flaws in that system, so.
Your new employee, you would think would cross-train with utilities the way you guys all do?
Yep, that's the whole, yep.
Um, that stump grinder, that would just be for city property? I mean, you're taking down Elm, or ash trees in-
Parks, boulevards, yeah, maybe in the city, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
There's a few ash trees out at the lake.
Lots, you're right. There's a lot just across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I did an inventory just to drive around when this first came about and it was 350, 400 ash trees, just boulevard and parks, somewhere in that range.
Joe, down at the bottom, we're both, uh, chip seal on the Lakeview Trail.
Yep.
Did we work anything out with the county on what the, um, maintenance agreement will be for that trail?
I haven't seen that come through. So I don't know, moving forward, yeah, what happens in 10 years, when it needs sealing again, I don't.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll put one together. That project is near complete.
Yeah.
It looks really nice. Uh, can we move on to park budget? I think so. Really, the only significant increase in the park budget is the line item that says miscellaneous. That's where we put, placed money in that line item each year to buy equipment. Um, last year we had $50,000, pardon me. This year, we have $50,000 budgeted. And Joe and I put together this proposal of making that $67,500 to match some of the projects that the park board would like us to do next year. Uh, the park board is recommending that we increase that number by $25,000 more.
In addition, the 67.5 plus-
Plus 25.
So instead of 67.5, it would be 92.5.
So the stump grinder's roughly $17,500 bucks?
Ballpark, yep.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
That's pretty much it, no. Um, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Street department's budget looks great. And as you do know, we will discuss this through, you know, the remainder of the year. We adopt our budget in December each year, so.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Now we are going to jump back to old business number one, Safe Routes.
Yes, we are very close to advertising for bids for the Safe Routes program for the project. We are waiting for the official word from the state aid office to approve it. We have received that through an email. We're just waiting to get another email link so we can get this, uh, rolling. We are looking to advertise, the schedule here is on, is on the screen. Um, we do plan on opening bids and we can have the council approve them at your September 25th council meeting. So that's two meetings from now. And the plan is to begin construction in October. So tonight, you have a resolution, number 19, that authorizes staff to advertise for bids.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 202319.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's exciting to see this starting to come together a little more. We've been talking about this as long as I've been the mayor, so.
Longer.
Longer, right. Okay. New business number two.
Yeah, Paul's sitting in that back row. He's probably patiently waiting. When are they going to get to me?
Maybe we'll catch you next meeting, Paul. It gets kind of late now.
Okay, let me flip these maps to make it easier. Okay, so Paul lives on the south part of his twin home. You see parcel A. And then his neighbor Randy, or does he go by Randall?
Randy.
Randy, um, has parcel B up behind their twin homes. The Hamiltons own the property and they sold parcel A and parcel B to both Paul and Randy. And what Paul and Randy are requesting is that they combine those parcels to their existing lots, so they have a bigger backyard in essence. I was able to get all the appropriate paperwork. I sent all that to the county. I have not heard from the county yet, but, uh, city attorney Jason Moran approves of the resolution. So tonight's resolution approves this, and then what I'll do is I will send all of this to the county and we'll need to get it recorded as well. You have any questions? And I want to say thank you to Paul and Randy for your patience. It takes a, it takes a little bit to get a survey done and all sorts of things, so.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 202320.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five vote.
That's all I have for tonight.
All in favor?
Ivan? Your second?
745.
All right, thank you, everyone.